Getting ahead of myself. Let's call the meeting to order, please.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Terry Pavicic.
Here.
Rick Pavanato.
Here.
Joanna Vasquez-Drexler.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda tonight is student perspectives, right? South.
Students, I'm gonna have Ed come up and kick this off.
Well, this month, we're sharing student perspectives because you're gonna get to hear from kids from both campuses. I know there was a lot of discussion when we merged the two gymnastics programs into one this year. So I've asked the girls to come and just talk about their experience, the process they went through to form a team. Their success speaks for itself. I'm sure you saw how great they did in the state finals. So we have students here tonight who are gonna introduce themselves, but we also have Coach Campos and Coach Norris here to support them as well. So I'll let the kids get it started and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Lauren. I'm from Downers North, and I'm a senior.
I'm Gabby. I'm from Downers North, and I'm a junior.
Um, so coming into the season, everyone knows, was like really skeptical about what it was gonna be like and, you know, like, just the whole process was rough from the beginning because, like, nobody from North knew what was going on, and I bet people from the South didn't know what was going on either. But, um, once we actually, like, got into the gym and, like, started the whole process of, like, trying out and, like, building a team, like, our coaches helped us a lot. We did a lot of team-building things, which led us to, like, become one. We didn't really feel like two teams after a while, but that was because, like, we put in the work and the effort into, really trying to build our team up from the ground up.
I would say basically the same thing. From the beginning, we were all really nervous about what it was gonna look like going into another school, and if people would get cut, and how JV would look, and if varsity would have to move down to JV. And I know that a lot of people were nervous about that, and that resulted in a lot of people not even trying out from the JV level. Um, but I think, like Lauren said, once we got into the actual tryouts and the rhythm of things, we realized that it wasn't necessarily, like, two schools coming together. We were all just, like, one team working at the same goal. And it helped that a lot of us knew each other prior to that, just from seeing each other at games and other meets, and a lot of us did club together. So, um, it was more of just, like, we were just kind of friends, and we got to be on the same team, and it was really fun to be with people that you already knew. And then the freshmen coming in, we got to get to know them throughout, like, the whole season, and I think that doing all the exercises that we did with, like, the whole team and, like, working on everyone focusing on being one team and not North and South helped us, like, cohere together, and by the end of the season, it was, like, not even two schools. Like, I, from the beginning, I knew that we were gonna work really well together, so I'm very happy with how it turned out and everything.
Um, I'd just also like to point out, like, I don't know, like, it felt like varsity really, like, got together really well. I don't know, like, sometimes, like, JV felt like a little off, but, um, I think that, like, the process that we went through, like, that's what, like, brought it together. I don't know if I'm explaining that correctly or not, but, um... I don't know, like, I feel like varsity and JV were, like, two very separate things, but because, like, varsity was able to focus on each other, we were able to, um, get to, like, the level that we got to.
Yeah, I would say I can't really speak for the JV girls, 'cause I don't really know, like, their experience, as there was different coaches and different practices, and they had different agendas that we did. So I won't say anything on their behalf if they liked it or not, or how their experience was, but I know from my standpoint, and at least what I've gotten from the rest of varsity, that we've all really enjoyed it, and I think it was, for me, it was more fun than last year, and it was more exciting, and I think the change helped everyone, and especially me, just regain, like, love for the sport. So, yeah.
Okay, I'm Mia. I go to North, and I'm a junior.
I'm Alina, and I'm also a junior, but I go to South.
Okay, so one of the things that really stood out to me was, like, the, like, the coaches. I was a little nervous going into it because I've had, like, the same coach for two years, who was Linda Reynolds, who coached at North before. And now that I went to South, like, I was nervous. I didn't know, like, the different coaching techniques, and then I met, um, Campos and Bill, and I really like how they coached us. I loved how they, like, pushed us hard to, like, to do our skills, and just, like, the whole experience of kind of getting a new perspective was really beneficial to me as a gymnast.
Um, I pretty much just wanted to add on to what everyone else was saying, but, um, I kind of knew these girls before the season started, but I kind of just knew them as rivals almost, but they were kind of my friends, but this year, it was much more fun to be one team and work together to accomplish everything we did, so I'm just happy that I got to create these friendships or build them up even more than they were, and I'm pretty sure this is the most fun I've had in all of my seasons here on the gymnastics scene.
All right, hi, I'm Katrina Carlson. I'm a sophomore at Downers Grove South.
I'm Lacey Smetana, and I'm a freshman at North. Um, so, like, being a freshman, it was really nice to, like, be part of, like, a team, where, like, we can be able to compete against other teams, 'cause for club, you're kind of just up there competing against yourself for yourself, and it was nice to know that, like, you have a team behind you to back you up. And especially since, like, I know a lot of these girls from, like, club and stuff, and so it was really nice to be able to compete with them this year.
And then also, while I did know a lot of the girls this year through our club teams, there were a few girls that I didn't know before, and I would say we got just as close as everyone else, and what we did with each other and through the coaches and everything, we really became, like, sisters. Like, I will talk to these girls for anything. I will go to them for anything, even after a season, and these three and a half months brought us really close together, and, um... Yeah. Does anyone have any questions for us?
I do. For, first of all, I was late, so congratulations, 'cause we're literally, I'm a gymnastics mom myself. Um, not a gymnast, but a gymnastics mom. Um, I just, I'm just curious. I'd like to ask every one of you, and there's no discussion about this at all going on. I don't want any rumors to get out, "Oh!" But just out of curiosity, which would you prefer, having separate teams or having one team?
Personally, I prefer the co-op.
The co-op?
Um, 'cause I, I know all of them, like, outside of school as well. Um, and I feel like going back, like, to separate teams, like, I'd be losing, like, Katrina's, like, a really good friend of mine, and I'd be, like, losing that, like, I guess, like, we'd become, like, frenemies, I guess. We'd be friends, but I'd have to go against her.
Yeah, I'd say I like the co-op because, um, so last year's my first year. The team was mostly my older sister and Andrea Davenport and Alina for the most part, and I think just having a bigger team, having more depth, really allowed me, um, to do better this year. Like, I suffered an injury. I hurt my back this year, and I really had these girls to rely on, so I think that really helped me through the season.
And again, I just want to reiterate, we're not even, there's no, like, some, there's no discussion about this. There's no, there's no, I don't want any letters or calls about it. We're not bringing gymnastics back to North.
Just informal poll.
This is just an informal poll among you guys. We haven't even, yet.
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
To that point yet.
We're just, we're basking in your greatness right now.
Yeah, absolutely basking.
Well, I'm a senior, so next year, it doesn't really affect me.
But still.
But, like, so, like, I know, like, the whole process of, like, becoming a co-op was just, like, I don't know, it just, like, did not flow well, but, like, I think that once we got to it, like, I think it'd be even worse, like, to bring us together for a year and then split us all back up. I think that it should go on because, like, just the whole process of splitting up, figuring out where to go, and, like, all this change just did not, like, sit well with people, and that's, like, I think another reason why people left and quit, so, yeah, I think we should keep it.
Um, just to add on to what Lauren said, uh, this will be my senior year, so it does affect me, but I would say I would like the co-op. Um, going into it, I was definitely against it before I had tried it, just because I was very nervous about where I would stand and how it would affect, like, the whole team and stuff like that, but now I've gotten so close to, like, all the girls on the team and the coaches, and I've gotten used to, like, the coaching style and what I'm expected to do. And I think that because it was just so fun for me this year, and I really, like, regained love for the sport, and it was more of just, like, I was more passionate about it this year rather than, like, "Oh, I have to do it, 'cause it's gymnastics, I have to do it this year." I actually enjoyed doing it and going to practice every day and being with, like, basically my family for three and a half months. So I think pulling us apart would just confuse things even more and be harder for a lot of us as we just got used to new coaching and each other, and then we get pulled apart again. And I think also just having each other, as, like Katrina said, with injuries and stuff helped a lot, just, like, regained confidence in a lot of girls that they weren't, like, needed every single day, and if you were injured, that you could take a step back, and other girls would be there to pick you up, so.
Um, I mean, kind of the same thing they just said, like, I enjoy the co-op better. I know, like, I was skeptical coming into it because I had never, like, done it before, you know, I was so used to just having, like, North as one team, but now that we're all together, like, I couldn't picture it any other way, like, I like us all together as a team.
Yeah, I'm just kind of adding on to what other people were saying, but, like, like Katrina said, like, last year and my freshman year, there were only, like, four or five people, including myself, on the team, so just the little things, like this year, like, the bus rides, just having more people was way more fun. And, yeah, that's why I like the co-op a lot better.
And the logistics of it, of the North getting over to South, it would...
Yeah, I think that was fine. I mean, we, we ended up just, like, I don't think there was even, like, a bus. We just ended up carpooling because, I mean, like, Cher, oh, she's not here, and Emily would just come. They walked to my car with me, and it was super smoothly.
Cool. Any other questions or...?
Do you think, um, some of the, some of the girls that decided not to go out for gymnastics this year because it was a co-op, do you think that, is there any talk, have you heard any talk about maybe some of them, "Wow, maybe I want to be a part of this," in coming back?
I don't think they will be coming back. Um, I don't know, their experience on JV was different from our experience on varsity, and I don't know, like, what caused them to, like, want to quit or something like that, but I know that, like, what, I don't know. I think, like, the change and, like, new coaches, it was just hard for, more hard for them to adapt to it. And I think that, like, that's the reason, one of the reasons why they decided that gymnastics is just no longer for them. 'Cause I think they were, like, also, sorry, on the brink of, like, not wanting to do it in the first place, and then coming in and trying it, and then not being the way they wanted it to be. They just didn't enjoy it as much.
Yeah, I talked to some girls today about, um, like, if they would come back next year if we were so co-op, or if we didn't co-op and we were just separate, and that, see if they would come back. And I think that for them, or at least who I talked to, it was more of, like, for fun and going into, like, this whole new atmosphere and, like, having, I think, getting pushed harder, just from what I've seen, is the coaching was a lot different. At North, it was more like JV was, like, "Oh, it's fun, just kind of do whatever," and not that that's bad, but going into co-op, it was more of, like, "Okay, like, we're here to work. You really need to, like, get your skills," and it was still fun, but I don't think they were used to that, and all of us have been on club, so we were kind of used to, like, the rigorous schedule and everything and having to work for it. And I don't think that they were expecting that or wanted that, and they were more looking for it to be as, like, a fun activity. So I think that that was some of the reason why that some of the girls quit, and also they, because they didn't do club, they didn't know any of the girls going in, so it was very, like, divided, and I think that because JV was a lot bigger than varsity, they had more trouble, like, getting to know each other and stuff.
Well, congratulations to you all for, you know, getting past any fears and going onto such great success, right? Seventh place.
Great success. You killed it.
Pretty fantastic, yes.
Yes.
You killed it.
Pretty fantastic, so, and I, you know, I always notice too, I mean, I, 'cause I'm a gymnastics dad, and, uh, you know, the North and South teams always seemed very supportive of each other. I mean, at least that's what I always observed, and a lot of friendships were there already, so I'm, I had a sneaking suspicion this was going to be a resounding success in terms of results, but, and I have a little inside track, 'cause I knew the coaches pretty well, and I know their commitment to it, so, uh, so congratulations, right?
Absolutely.
You bring up a good point. Congratulations to everyone, but especially for the, to the coaches, 'cause not only did you guys work so hard in a, in a, I don't care what he says, in a difficult sport, but you guys brought them together. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say, like, the time and effort that they put into each and every girl was really evident, like, Campos and Bill knew me and Alina pretty well, but they had a lot of other girls to get to know, and through each and every practice, they would sit down and figure out what each girl's needs were to figure out how they would be most successful, and that's how we got to state this year, so.
Very good.
Done.
Well, good luck to the seniors and good luck to everybody going forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the 2021 staffing recommendations.
All right, so we're into staffing season. Uh, every year, we come to the board with a variety of things. Over the last few years, we've kind of broken this up a little differently, so we've, we started feathering these things out rather than the board having to deal with it all in one long night, 'cause those nights can be long. So already, we've talked about the department chair, 504 coordinator position. Already approved that. We're working on hiring that position. Last week, we talked about path, so we've already talked through that, and the .6 at South, .4 at North program. So two more to talk about that we haven't yet discussed that will be in the recommendations for changes this year. One is a full-time, full position 1.0, psychologist that would be district level. This would help support T-99. Uh, we have provided those supports, uh, in the past through SACID, so we would pull back some of our SACID programming and hire our own psychologist to be there, but we also have some, uh, district support that we need here and there where you just need to fill in and have somebody on call. Uh, Scott can speak more specifically to those needs if you're interested. But, uh, overall, this is Scott's recommendation. We would offset the cost by reducing SACID support, so be a brand-new person to us, but it wouldn't be a full, brand-new cost to us by adding that position. So questions on that one?
No, it just makes a lot of sense to have somebody in our building.
And then, uh, the next one is social work at, uh, this would be at North. You're gonna hear a lot over the next couple of weeks about how our special education numbers at North have ballooned greatly in the last year. Part of this is some new laws where we're required to go looking for students that are in need a little bit more diligently than we've had to in the past, especially with trauma-informed practices that are out there, and some of it is that the numbers are just growing. They're just naturally occurring. So Scott has done some analysis. We heard from the North staff that they were having difficulty meeting all of the social work needs this year, uh, particularly those related to special education students. Uh, Scott did an analysis of how we're supporting this at South, which has always had a slightly bigger program. There's more students at South to begin with. When we looked at South's model, it's about 52 students to every one social worker, so .6 social work, so 60% of a full-time position at North would bring the North numbers to an equivalent level. So we'd have equal support on both sides of town by adding that .6 social work. So that's an estimated cost of $48,000 to, to provide that balance. So any questions on, on that one? So Hank, 52, 52 per social worker. How does that compare versus standards, either Illinois or our, our comparison group? How are we looking?
Scott?
Yeah, it's, it's, um, so it is 52 to 1 for special ed, so it's not the general ed. Um, and typically, um, I mean, I don't know if there's really a model out there, but the, I know that the Social Work Association speaks to 50, so we're, I mean, we're a little higher than that. Um, the state speaks to, like, speech pass two of being no more than 60. So we kind of, the 52 puts us in a spot where it does even out kind of our support for special ed in terms of the caseload numbers, and then, um, so, and I think it keeps us in line with kind of that 50 is kind of what we're targeting.
I was just asking, 'cause would we, would we want to be, I mean, I don't want to do the bare minimum. Would we want to be better? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we keep looking at it. I mean, I think we, you know, like, I, I mean, I like how we, you know, even during our meetings at the parent advisory, we talk about different things. I mean, I, you know, we'll keep looking at it, um, you know, and, and we feel that this is a, a good number to be at, so.
Well, I, I would like to make sure that they're not overworked, you know, 'cause some students can be more challenging than others.
Sure. No, I mean, the nice thing is, is that this is special ed, uh, you know, targeting the special ed population, so we still have our psych and social workers, you know, supporting from C-triple-S, so from there, that's where if there's crisis and there needs to be collaboration and all that, there's still, there's still a layer there to help, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you can always, if you need more help, you can always...
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna continue to look at it, like, even, that's kind of why with the, you know, the psychologist one at T-99, that's growing, and that person will be able to help do what we already have dedicated resources to the, to the social work. They're gonna pick that up as well. So it'll be nice to have someone in-house.
I, for one, am glad we're doing this, 'cause I just like seeing the additional support. I mean, our teachers are the core of our, of our work, and they're so valuable, but our students, even students who are not in special ed, require so many, so much support now, and it's probably going to become even more so, so.
And now remember this year with the restructuring of adding the department chair for Counseling and Support Services and restructuring so that that administrative position is overseeing both C-triple-S and the Special Ed Department, should provide us a better coordination of services across all students, and also be able to provide us a little more insight as to exactly what needs are, are there in real time across both departments. There'll be a little more coordination across the two, so, uh, we hope that, we anticipate that that will just help us up our game moving forward.
And keep an eye on things, you know, so if something needs to be adjusted, you guys will...
It kind of varies. It really depends on what your load looks like. Can Minnesota, but some years I had kids that did not require a lot of attention, other years, there were just a few who demanded a ton of attention, and you go, "Where's everybody else?" So it really does depend on the case load, what it looks like.
Right. Obviously, every student's individual, but when we move into students with IEPs, even more individual.
Even more.
Yeah.
All right, so that will be wrapped into the staffing recommendations coming forward. This does give a preview, though, of some of the things you're going to see next week, or next board meeting, not next week. Don't come next week unless you really want to be here.
You'll be alone.
At the next board meeting, we bring the, the recommended FTE based on sectioning for the year, and you're going to see, particularly at North, our special education numbers have grown very rapidly, so there's going to be a request for FTE related to special education at North. We also have an increased shock in culinary at South. You build two premier culinary arts labs, you tend to attract students to them. Uh, we'll also have an increase in CTE around our two new internship classes. Both are running. Um, both, remember, are for one class, two periods, one period for the class, and then one period for the outside support of them in the workplace, so all of those programs are kind of pushing forward, which are all board goals, um, but we're gonna have some staffing needs around those things. So you're gonna see a slight uptick in FTE next year, but it's all pretty explainable to either the increase in special ed or kids choosing the programming that we're hoping that they're choosing, so.
Good, good. How's our pool looking?
Which pool?
For teachers.
Oh, we're not to that point yet, so the next step is on the 16th, we approve all of the positions. We approve all the staffing, the staff that comes back, the staff that doesn't. All of those pieces factor in on the 16th, and then that week after that is when all the postings go out. We might have a couple of postings trickle out over the next couple of weeks because of retirements, and we know that, you know, we'll have those, or, uh, folks that have already put in leaves or those kinds of things, but, um, yeah, it'll be after the 16th that, then the big hiring season and push starts.
Hank, if you saw an increase, what saw a decrease?
Uh, at South, uh, you'll see this the next time, foreign language. World languages is really taking a hit in exchange for culinary.
Okay. Just curious, that's all.
Yeah, that's the biggest overall across the district. Anywhere else, English a little bit?
Humanities, I mean, we saw...
Yeah, there's only so many spots, and if you're giving up, if you're taking something, that's why, only reason I ask, 'cause there's only so many spots, 'cause we don't do summer school.
Janice makes a good point. We're seeing a, a drop in humanities and replace for STEM, right, for those types of courses.
I think maybe we don't have data to show this, but just based on looking at numbers, I think more kids are opting to take a class instead of a study hall because of the options that they're offered, too, so just...
That's good.
I think that's great, yeah.
Yeah. We, we continue to push above seven on our average number of courses, right, so, or up to seven, somewhere around there, so I, I think that's what, kids are taking seven classes and a lunch, right? All right, Master Facility Plan bid requests. Jim's here to update on us on that.
Okay, these were the biggies, the ones we've been waiting for. Uh, so the first one's Phase C for South, uh, so we had two openings, December 19th and January 9th. 76 bids, so a lot of competition, uh, big numbers, uh, $26 million worth of work, uh, so very happy. Took a while to get, uh, bring this to you because we scoped these very thoroughly. Uh, as you'll see in the next one for North, we did that as well. So, uh, very happy with the numbers, uh, with both of these openings for C. We are only about a million dollars worth of bidding left to go for the Master Facility Plan, so if you just pop over to North, Hank.
There it is.
You're already there.
Yeah.
So this was for January 24th for North, 62 sealed bids, about $16.3 million worth of work, so between these two, uh, as you probably already know, we put some contingency money, you know, a couple million dollars back into the contingency, bringing that back up to close to $7 million, so very happy with the results of these very good contractors. Many already worked in Phase A or B, and one for C, so, uh, we're happy, and we got some good, uh, good competition, good numbers, brought some money back to contingency, so couldn't have gone better. Very happy with it.
So I was curious, um, I didn't go back and look, uh, so how many of, how many of these contractors are contractors that are continuing on to see at the school with the next phase of the work?
Many, uh, and here's...
That's ideal.
Here's what you, what you see, so many, especially Phase C, so between North and South, these are huge projects, so for electric, you're seeing two different contractors. For plumbing, you're seeing two at...
Yeah, just about with everything except for concrete.
So they're not splitting up their staff so low they can't handle it. Many that have won Phase B over at South are now winning Phase C over at South. Know the building, know what's going on, and are continuing on, so that's great, and we lost a couple, but that's, you know, the process of bidding, but, um, you don't see many bigs having both North and South, even HVC, any of those where they're into $2 or $3 million worth of work. Um, so we got them committed to one school, and some of them already been there.
No, it's just, you know, ideal if we have, you know, the guys who are doing the electrical Phase B end up also doing it Phase C at whichever school, that's, yeah, that continuity. Plus, uh, by doing it the way we've done it like this, too, I think we reap the benefit of that, what you just said. Um, they're more familiar, they understand what they're getting into, less risk means that they don't pad their number as much, and they can be a little tighter with it, and we reap the benefit of that.
Yeah, that's really what happened. We have to accept the lowest qualified bid... Yeah, that's really what happened. We have to accept the lowest qualified bidder, but they're able to come in a little lower because they don't have to pad. What you said is perfect, Mike. They're, they're not padding their bid with risk because they're already in the building. They know what's there. They know what to expect. Um, so that allows them to, once they're in, then it allows them to be a little more competitive for the next one.
And then that familiarity and continuity, uh, hopefully equates to better, you know, higher quality of work as well. So it's a, it's a win-win all around. So, well done.
And the one company that really has been winning both sides is Lindblad.
Lindblad, yeah, the concrete.
They are.
Yeah, they're pouring a lot of concrete.
They gave some great numbers, and they're pouring it. Sound concrete.
Yeah. Concrete's gotten expensive, too.
Yeah.
It has.
And we, you know what? Some of these numbers really brought that, that couple million back to us, and concrete was one of them.
Yeah.
Excellent.
For you. Thank you, gentlemen, because I know I heard you work on that.
Well done.
Thanks.
All right, uh, master facility plan update was the next one. And, uh, Jim, really, most of the update came in the form of the numbers you've seen. We got, uh, updated numbers today that we're preparing for the next month's budget report. They continue to track just the way you saw them last month, even a little bit better, uh, as these final bids are coming in. As Jim said, you know, we're nine, $1 million away is 99% of all of the bidding is done. So now we're down to the unknowns of the actual construction, right? Um, but to head into that last 18 months with pretty much our original contingencies left is unbelievable.
Yeah.
Um, we're in a really good shot, a good, good spot. And that is because of the bidding and the, and that process and the.
When do we start planning on what to do with that contingency?
Uh, they would like for us to wait until after we get into the, this next group.
Yeah.
So as we come out of.
After school starts again in the fall.
Yeah. As we come out of this last, uh, bit of construction from the summer, then as we go into the fall, then we'll probably be coming to the core team and then the board with recommendations. Like, if things continue as we expect, you know, because every month, every week that come, goes by, we get closer to what the real number will be at the end.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, so I'd say the fall.
The, the date, we've got another core team meeting coming up.
Tax Day, April 15.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's when we'll lay out what can, uh, what alternates have come up over the last six months that we'll look at for those. Uh, we hope to have a firmer number for the Dunham Street circle, which you saw in this week's update, is moved to the planning process with the city. And once it moves, or the village, once it moves through the village planning process, then we can go out to bid. Then, as the board requested, once we have real numbers, we'll bring it back to the board and just say, here's where we ended up. Is everybody comfortable with the, the actual number for Dunham? Uh, 63rd Street's still a long way away. Uh, that, that is next, a project for next fall. So. Uh, any questions on that?
So 63rd Street, then, being more than a year out.
Yeah.
Would probably be different funds than what we're talking about for master facility.
No, the master facility, uh, we can still spend funds for five years.
I know, but I would think that we would want to, through the core team, plan on, you know, if you don't know how much to hold out for that, for 63rd Street, be, nice to be able to utilize in areas that.
It would still, if it's next fall, it would still come at the same time we're talking about that last, last group of contingency.
We'd be in a lot better shape to bring a budget number that we can, you know, start discussing, something like that. We're just really being aggressive with the Dunham drop-off right now because we need that, like, right away.
Yeah.
We don't even know how feasible 63rd Street is. Yeah, I mean, that is.
And it's the water detention.
Yeah, I was going to say, with the traffic study and then the village and all that, it's still.
Let's still investigate this. The recommendation is to investigate that from the, the pedestrian safety study. It wasn't like, do this. It was investigate the feasibility of this. So, uh, that's what we'll be doing.
Jim, thank you. Everything looks good. Thank you so much.
It's been, uh, pretty epic.
Yeah.
To say the least.
I'd say you're getting a few more gray hairs as a result, but.
My gym anyways.
I was going to say, it's pretty impressive every time I pass by, especially South.
Yeah, we're getting close. I would say right around, uh, the end of the school year, right after school lets out, will be time for board members to put on their hard hats and go for a little bit of a walk. Right now, it's, it's not quite a safe, uh, very safe area to be inside of.
You're mobile.
I can do that. I say we throw a huge gala for the community, and I, we could probably scrape up $100 to put that on, couldn't we?
Well, remember, every year at homecoming weeks, we do after the parades, a, a walking tour of the new facilities.
Cool. I forgot about that.
Yeah. And we, uh, we provide cake.
We did that.
Actually, last year, we even served cake.
Yeah.
We didn't just provide it, we served.
We even did a cookout, uh, I think, um, for the anniversary of South, that one year.
Well, 2023 is the 100-year anniversary of the district, so we'll have to plan a cookout then.
So we might be working.
Another $100 we'll put.
We can spend $100 a year.
I'll donate the $100.
I'll go handies.
Okay. You and me, 50/50, literally.
Is that, is that?
That's it for the items on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, do we have anybody who wishes to approach the board? Hearing none. We're going to move on to closed session. Uh, we need a motion to go into closed session for the collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the district or against legal counsel for the district to determine his validity.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Mike, second.
Thank you very much. Carrie Pampasich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Boskas-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Kukta.
I am motion carries. We are in closed session. We will not be taking any action when we come out. Thank you.